For the record, council members Williamson, Rule, Aspiro, Callister, and Groat are present. Councilman Darling is not with us today. We will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great body of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, for announcements, staff. Are you ready? Well, let's start with council. Council, do you have any announcements?
I got a fun one. As of this morning, 10:33, I'm now a father of four. So we had our baby boy this morning. Very, very thankful to raise my kids in this wonderful community. So thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Any other announcements from council? Okay, staff?
Me first? Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Can everyone hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Okay. The city would like to acknowledge the effort and the time that Angela Tennyson, Community Resource Officer for the Police Services Division, has put into her professional development. Angela recently completed 40 hours of training from the National Animal Care and Control Association, also known as NACA, to become a Certified Animal Cruelty Investigator. To my knowledge, I believe Angela is one of few, if not the only one, with that type of certification in our area. So good job, Angela. To show our appreciation for her work and conduct, we would like to present her with a certificate of recognition for her accomplishment. Can I get a round of applause and congratulations to Angela?
Thank you, Rule. Jennifer?
Yes, we have a couple of other announcements, Mr. Mayor. So this week, during the Association of Idaho Cities Annual Conference, the city was awarded a City Achievement Award for our efforts with outreach and community engagement. So just wanted to acknowledge that. And Association of Idaho Cities sent out a press release today and it read, "Idaho City officials are creative, innovative, and solution-oriented. The City Achievement Awards recognize the work of cities around Idaho that have implemented pioneering approaches to improve quality of life, address community challenges, and enhance service delivery in cost-effective ways. This year, awards were given in five categories: community engagement, economic and community development, parks and recreation, public safety, and public works in transportation. The city of Sandpoint was recognized with the City Achievement Award in the community engagement category for its Engage Sandpoint project. The Engage Sandpoint app was developed to provide citizens an easy way to stay informed and share feedback on city programs and projects, report non-emergencies, manage utility bills, apply for permits and registration, and stay connected with the city. Another element in this award was also our Open Town Hall survey platform, which we've used. And that's a perfect plug for me to remind people that we currently have a dog survey to inform our Parks and Recreation Master Planning process that is out now. And it is proving to be the most popular surveys that we have had. We have over 400 responses as of today. And we just launched it Sunday afternoon. So we're looking forward to sharing results of that with the council as well as with the public. So for anyone that's filled out the survey, you don't have to register for our Open Town Hall platform. But if you do register when we launch new surveys, you get announcements about new things that have come out. And also, when surveys are closed and the results of the survey, you'll get an announcement via email with the results. So you can see, when we're looking at the summary, what it is that we heard back from citizens. So that survey will remain open until June 30. Second announcement on my front is related to our long-discussed arts, culture, and historic preservation master planning effort. We went through a... We had requested proposals from consultants, had some very good proposals come in in response to our request. And we selected the Lakota Group to assist us with arts, culture, and historic preservation master planning efforts. That... We have our first kickoff meeting tomorrow. And what I anticipate we'll be discussing at that time is our steering committee and also when they'll be coming out to make a site visit here in Sandpoint. So we'll be kicking that off. I think the public can expect to see some opportunities come out of that probably in the next four weeks. One of the comments that we've heard quite frequently from the public this week has been related to the possibility of a permanent mural at the underpass to City Beach. And that would be one of those projects that would be considered under this type of a planning effort. Is it arts? Is it culture? Is it historic preservation? What would we want to represent at our entrance to our city beach? And certainly, there will be community opportunity to participate in that in part of this overall master planning effort. I would also note on that front, I did have a conversation with ITD this week about the possibility of approval for a mural. And they have done that around the state for permanent murals that are arts projects around the state. So that's something that they would be willing to consider as part of a master plan effort that is presented to them. Temporary art displays are not something that they're willing to consider because there's liability that goes along with that for them. So in doing any type of approval for a permanent display, obviously, they're going to require insurance with the city, whoever we have contracted to do the work at that location if we go down that route. But that's something that we can discuss during the master planning effort. Other updates that we have tonight for council. Quickly, on COVID-19 updates. We received an announcement late this afternoon. There were three additional cases identified in Bonner County in the last 24 hours. One is a worker at the Vista Care Nursing Home. So that's all the details that we know about that. But... And I will send council the update that we received, the press release that came out this afternoon. With that, I'm going to kick it over to Amanda to give you a quick update on a sidewalk workshop that's tomorrow and some upcoming BNSF road closures we just learned about.
Amanda, real quick, before you get started, I just want to say congratulations to staff and really to council as well, really former council, for that AIC Community Engagement Award. And I know I'm really proud of the work that the city did in creating that app that was a very novel approach to community engagement. It's been really effective. And in particular, you, Jennifer, and Melissa, were really at the heart of that effort. But I know Amanda and others throughout the city have really been engaged with the app, week in and week out. So... And this is, you know, really a nice culmination of the strategic planning work that went in, that council performed, you know, over the last couple of years to really dedicate our resources and broadening and improving our community engagement. So congratulations to staff and to council for that. And I think that's great work.
Thanks, Amanda. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll start with the first update being the road closure information that we recently received from BNSF. I'm sure you'll be seeing something in the paper and in other forums in the near future. This month, beginning on the 29th, so June 29, Boyer Road is going to be closed for two days. They have some track repair work that they need to do on the tracks that cross Boyer. That's the tracks that's just directly north of Baldy Mountain. So there will be detour signs in place. They will have advance notice up three days in advance, letting folks know that this is coming forward. Following those two days, they will be moving over to do track repairs on Great Northern. That work is anticipated to take a little bit longer than the work on Boyer Avenue, beginning on July 1st and potentially going through July 6th. So more to come on that, no doubt, from BNSF. I just wanted to make sure that you all had a heads up as soon as we learned as well. In addition, I thought it might be helpful to remind folks that we are having sidewalk workshops tomorrow. The sidewalk workshops are associated with our multimodal transportation master plan. And we're going to have a series of three workshops. They're all the same workshop. We've just tried to accommodate social distancing and make sure that people had options throughout the day of what time might work best for them. So the times begin at 7:30, noon, and 5:30. We still have some slots. We're going to break out into smaller groups. And we're going to talk... We're going to take a deep dive. Each workshop is two hours long. A deep dive into sidewalks, existing conditions, where we need improvements, and where do we really want to prioritize for maintenance and other concerns that we've heard for a long time about our sidewalks. So we're excited to have that conversation. If you can make it, we'd love to see you there. We just ask that you RSVP, please, so that we can make sure and accommodate everyone from a... Excuse me, a safety perspective. On our Facebook page, there is a link to RSVP.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right.
And then finally, we've had a lot of questions come into the city over the last week about protocols and policies with our police department. And so we thought it appropriate to have Cory kind of give you a quick update and include that under announcements because this is something that's been a hot topic lately. And so I'm going to hand it over to Chief Kuhn to address what we do on our police side.
Thanks, Jennifer. Some of you may or may not have seen, there's a lot of different campaigns, a lot of different policies that are being pushed by different groups across our nation. Some of those, after my Zoom meeting, I had four or five residents reach out to me. They were curious about following up on a couple of those campaigns. One of the campaigns in question that kept coming up was that Eat Can't Wait campaign. Basically, what that campaign is, is they've determined eight things that police departments should have within their policies that should be able to help reduce use-of-force complaints. So I got that list last week. And I went through our current department policy to see what we did have and what we didn't have and how they'd actually applied for the city of Sandpoint. And speaking with Jennifer, I thought it was important to come back and kind of share where we're at with our current policies and some of our procedures. So that if you guys have questions that are coming to the council from the public about the... Some of these campaigns, at least you should have an idea of what we're doing and what we already have in place. So I have a list. I try not to read too much, but I'm probably going to read a little bit off my notes so I don't miss too much. So bear with me. But I want to kind of go through the eight things. I'm going to add a ninth one in that has come up in the last couple of weeks. So one of... If you've read that list, the first one on their list, it's to ban chokeholds and strangleholds. They go on to talk about it allows off... Allowing officers to use chokeholds can result in the unnecessary death or serious injuries. Right now, the Idaho Post, it's our police officers' standards and training, they have started teaching what they call the lateral vascular neck restraint, which is a non-lethal hold when properly applied. That's an effective way to combat, to control combative individuals without inflicting injuries on suspects and/or officers. We currently, at the police department, do not have a policy that addresses the lateral vascular neck restraint. So our officers are not trained on it. So therefore, they cannot use it per our policy unless it fits into something else where they can justify it. Hopefully, that kind of makes sense. So we don't have a policy that says, no, it's... We just don't have one at all. So we could discuss that later. The second one on their list, it says that all cities should require de-escalation. In their packet, it goes on, it says, "The officers..." Our department policies should require officers to de-escalate situations when possible by communicating with subjects, maintain distance, and otherwise eliminating the need for use of force. It's important to remember that de-escalation is really an outcome and event. And that's kind of the goal when we do it. So go to our policy. We do have a de-escalation policy within the police department. And we've got several steps that they're supposed to follow, which I'll cover. We've talked about before how our officers have been through de-escalation, through that training, through CIT. And they actually do a great job of de-escalating those times that we can. So a couple of quick things that we have in our policy that kind of fits right in line with that campaign. And when officers respond to a call, the first thing they're supposed to do is evaluate the safety of the conditions. Officers are trained to introduce themselves and attempt to attain the other person's name. Officers are supposed to be polite, calm, courteous, and avoid overreaching. They're supposed to speak and move slowly and in a non-threatening manner. They're supposed to moderate the level of direct eye contact, which is you try to mirror those with you so it's not overpowering. Remove distractions or disruptive people from the area that are causing issues. Demonstrate active listening skills. Provide for sufficient avenues of retreat or escape if the situation arises. Within that policy of some shoulds we should do, there's also some shouldn'ts that we do. Some of those things we should try not to do is use a stance or a tactical approach that could be interpreted as aggressive. Officers are trained up to allow others to interpret or engage that person. So it's kind of monitoring it. Corner a person who is not believed to be armed, violent, or suicidal. Officers are not to argue, speak with, raise their voice, or use threatening threats to obtain compliance. Or some of the things that they're supposed to be doing on de-escalation. The third thing they have in there is it talks about a warning before shooting. They want... That campaign requires officers to give a verbal warning in all situations before the use of deadly force. The issue I have with that request is it's the term "all." And we live and die by what we have in our policies. So words do matter. And so when they put the word "all" in there... And I'll explain, our policy says this. It says, "Officers..." And I'll paraphrase. "Some officers can use force when they reason believe there is an immediate risk of seriously bodily injury or death to another person." It goes on. It goes on to say, "In such circumstances, a verbal warning should perceive the use of deadly force where feasible." And so we do have in our policy that if we have time to offer that warning beforehand, then we want our officers to do it. But there are certain situations where it just doesn't apply. So the term "all" wouldn't apply. I use the... We go back and look at Officer Hutter, Officer Clark situation. You've got to remember, the two officers were dispatched to an elderly gentleman that had some questions. They show up. They're talking with the gentleman on the front porch. Subject inside the house starts firing. They drew and returned fire. There wasn't time to communicate. So it's been our policy, if we'd had the term "in all situations," they would have been a violation of our policy. And we don't want to set our officers up for failure. So I understand the intent of what they're looking at in their campaign. And I think we meet that intent of it. The next thing they have on their list, number five, it is to have a duty to intervene. So they want... It says, "Require officers to intervene and stop excessive force used by another officer and report those incidences immediately to a supervisor." Within our policy, we do have that. We have a duty to intercede. Basically, our policy says, "Any officer present or observing another officer using force that is clearly beyond that which is objectively reasonable under the circumstances shall, when in a position to do so, intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force." So that is something that we do have currently in our policy. Number six on their list, it's they want a ban shooting at moving vehicles. Now, they go on to explain in their overview that banning officers from shooting at moving vehicles in all cases, a term "all cases," which is regardless as to particular dangers. Our policy covers most all situations. But the term "all" can, like I talked about, kind of hang us up. So our policy says, "Shots fired at or moving vehicles are rarely effective." So we train that that's not something we want to do right away. Officers shouldn't move out of the path of an approaching vehicle instead of discharging the firearm at the vehicle or any of its occupants. Any officer should only discharge a firearm at a moving vehicle or its occupants when the officer reason believes there is no other reasonable means available to avert the threat of the vehicle or of deadly force other than that vehicle is directed at the officers or others. It goes on to say down a little bit, and it says, "Officers should not shoot in any part of the vehicle in any attempt to disable the vehicle." So I think what that campaign is getting at is that we need to have some clear policies for officers to have that guidance given and then to train on it. And so I think we're in that... We're meeting those needs. Number seven they had on their list was the require the use of force continuum. Looking at our policies, we don't have the exact... We don't have a photograph of a chart of the use of force continuum. But we have a list of things that the officers are supposed to be able to check off in their head as they deal with subjects. And so I kind of... I got some of the lists. And so I wanted you guys to kind of see what the officers are trying to process while they're on a call, making the determination on what level of force they're trying to use. So a use of force, kind of the blanket statement, says, "Officers shall use only the manner of non-force that is reasonably appears necessary, given the facts and circumstances perceived by that officer at the time of the event to accomplish the legitimate law enforcement purpose." So here's a list of some facts. The factors included, but are not limited to. The officer's supposed to make this list. So they're supposed to immediately understand the threat to the officers or others, conduct the individual's being... So it's the conduct of the individuals being confronted as a reasonable person, but as reasonably perceived by the officer. Officers, subject factors. So they're supposed to be able to identify age, size, relative strength, skills, levels, injuries sustained before, during, or after the exhaustion or fatigue of the parties involved, the number of officers available versus how many subjects are available. The officers in this use of force continuum, the officers are supposed to understand the effects of drugs and/or alcohol that are involved. They're supposed to understand the subject's mental state or capacity. They're supposed to understand proximity of weapons or dangerous instruments within close distance. So rags, shovels, knives, et cetera. If you're inside a house or outside a house, may not be a firearm. They're supposed to understand the degree to which the subject has been effectively restrained and his ability to resist despite being restrained, the availability of other options available to the officer, seriousness of the suspect's offense. What was a crime that the person committed, right? They're supposed to be able to identify and understand that. Training that the officer has and those officers responding, potential for injury to officers, a suspect, or others. Whether the person appears to be resisting, attempting to evade arrest by flight, or if that is an aggressive attack on the officers. Officers are supposed to... The risk of reasonable foresight, consequences of the escape, apparent need for immediate control of the subject or a prompt resolution of the situation. The list continues. Whether the conduct of the individual being confronted no longer is reasonably appears to possess an imminent threat. We talked about that de-escalation again, back in our policies. The officers have to go up just as quick as they come back down. And we do those trainings to make sure that we're meeting and we're fluid in those, all part of this use of force continuum. Prior contacts with the subjects. If they met the subject, aware of the subject, understand who he is or she is. And then there's the caveat of anything else that may be pertinent, right? So that's kind of some of the things that they're supposed to juggle through their head as they're in their use of force continuum. So it's hard to put it in just a pie-shaped kind of thing of, this is what you have to do. I go back to that situation with the officers involved in the shooting. At one time, we were taught stuff A, B, C, and D years ago. And we've got away from that because in Hutter's and Clark's situation, there's no time to deploy a less lethal or a chemical spray or to give a warning. Unfortunately, in that situation, they had to go right to use of deadly force. And so there's... It's... When we do it, it's more fluid to have a list and ideas and then train our officers to react. The next one on their list, I think, is number eight. And so this is the one that I think is probably most important for council to understand. It's not one we talk a lot about. It's requiring a comprehensive reporting of use-of-force situations. Their little guidelines says, "Require officers to report each time they use force or threaten to use force against civilians. Comprehensive reporting includes requiring officers report whenever they point a firearm at someone, in addition to all other types of use of force." We do have a pretty intense use-of-force reporting process for our officers when they're involved with the use of force. What they report on basically is it's any body force control, holds, chemical agents, impact weapons, display of a taser or a firearm, or deployment of those weapons. So anytime that they do so, basically, is if I am in the field and I have to take someone to the ground to place them under arrest, and I use an arm bar or a leg sweep, when those officers come back, even though they type their report, they still complete a form with the use they've used. That form then goes through their shift supervisor, lieutenant, the captain. It comes to me for a review. And then it goes to our risk management, which is outside of the police department, to make sure that we're not missing anything in a review. So we have a lot of checks and balance in our reporting process of... To have that oversight of use-of-force concerns that are out there. The other part of the use of force in one of the policies that I've seen come around is the over... A committee oversight that some cities are instituting or applying that police departments need that oversight. So I really looked at like... I wanted to be able to educate the council a little bit on like our use-of-force policies. How big a concern really is it for the city of Sandpoint? I went back over like the last 10 years. We... I'm going to estimate and say we average about 10 use-of-force reports, give or take, that meet those criterias a year. We don't have a ton of use-of-force reports. Most time, our officers do a phenomenal job of communicating with them and getting compliance. We average over 6,000 calls a year for service. Some of those calls, you know, are done by the phone. Some are done on domestics where you have multiple contacts. But if you look at the number of use-of-force reports we have, those actually calls that were going on, and that doesn't include those where we're doing bark checks or traffic stops or just general contacts with the public, the percentage is extremely low. Of those that we have where we actually use force, I can't remember the last time I've actually had someone come in and complain to me on a use-of-force complaint where the officer has used excessive force. So it's a... I'll just throw that out. So that's good. So we do have a current oversight. So we do have...
Cory, can I interrupt you for a second on that point? Do you have... Have you compared what our stats are in that regard to, say, like national stats?
I have not.
Okay.
I haven't.
Okay, thank you.
The other part I was going to add to that is we do have the ability to institute a review board for our use of force. So if there's something that I see that I believe is outside of policy or something that we believe is an excessive use of force in our policy, we're to basically institute a review board. That review board is part of the police department. So if it was a use-of-force issue, we'd bring in a use-of-force instructor. They'd have a peer officer with them. They'd have a supervisor within the department. It's listed that we look at citizens to come into those review boards. And one I didn't have on here that I'm going to add to our policy and get approval is to have a council member requested to attend that, too. It gives you guys that opportunity of those reviews to be able to be part of it and see what's going on. That's one we haven't had. But I think it's important in the climate that we have is that the council's a little more involved if they want to be. So we could put that on our list as I look at it.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
So that's kind of the quick overview of that campaign, like that Eat Can't Wait campaign. I would argue that we probably hit 99% of it. There's probably a couple of areas that we could tweak, add to. But I wanted the council to be aware of it. I kind of wanted the council to be aware of how many calls that we really have versus how many use-of-force complaints we have and what we're doing. So that's... I think that kind of sums it up. If there's any questions for the council and what you guys have heard over the last couple of weeks or something I can address.
Cory, I know you mentioned it, but I missed it. Do we have a policy on shooting in moving vehicles?
We do. So we don't recommend it.
Okay.
It's that don't recommend it unless it fits like this really narrow... And I haven't seen one in 20 years that fits that category. So...
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Yeah, go ahead. So I want to thank Jennifer and Chief Kuhn for your guys' video and for the listening audience. The city has their YouTube channel. It was fantastic. It was timely. You guys did...
You guys did, it was clear, concise. It informed me, especially as a new council member and as a citizen that's been up here to get behind the scenes. And Corey, I haven't had much of an opportunity to talk to you and to have you articulate what it is that you and your professionals do on a day-to-day operation. We are blessed to have such a good staff. And Jennifer, you did a great job fielding those questions. I could only imagine the feed that that was. And then Corey, so I had the opportunity to get to hang out with you a little bit on Saturday. I strongly suggest to all the citizens to get more involved, to see exactly what our police do here for us. Like, the mountain and the lake are amazing. Citizens are amazing. The other things that make this place amazing are the people that take care of us, which is our fire department, and our law enforcement. And for, I am very grateful for you guys. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, Deb, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the stats. As the mayor mentioned, if maybe we can have another update at our next council meeting that would define exactly, you know, the 6,000 calls versus, you know, how many uses of first force, the actual data points, you know? I'm the data point person, and then if we could maybe compare that against the national statistics, that'd be great, just to have some more numbers. So you can always say, yeah, we're doing a great job, but let's really base it on those data points so that the general public can have a clearer understanding and, and form their own opinion, shall we say, about how we are doing.
We're in the process of putting together our annual performance report in conjunction with the budget for councils, so that would be good information we can include in that performance report. So we'll have that for council. Thanks.
Good points, counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I just wanted to add on top of Deb's comment that I do find the weekly reports that Jennifer shares, excuse me, on police activities to be really helpful for me as a council member, and just gives me a general overview of what's going on in our city from a week-to-week basis. So those have been happening for the last couple of years, and I think really, really add to the information that you provide us, so I appreciate that.
I'm glad that you're fun and useful. Thank you.
And I just want to comment, too, to put my two cents forth in, is that I'm a raving fan of Chief Kuhn and his officers, so I know that I can always count on them if I need something and even just to talk things over, and so I really appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you for that report. Appreciate it. Anything else from staff?
Those are our announcements tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. So for those in the public who don't know, if you do want to speak at the public forum portion of the meeting, you can fill out one of these that are located at the front table. Please note that any written comments submitted by the public who requested that those comments be forwarded to city council are forwarded and included as part of the permanent meeting record as appropriate. So we will now shortly proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting. In the interest of time, for those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as for those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the front of the meeting. So we'll have 20 minutes at the front. If there's more, there are clearly more people that want to speak, then we can fit that 20 minutes. So we will continue the public hearing at the end of the meeting. We have a fairly short agenda this evening, so I don't anticipate that the wait should be too long for those who wish to stay.
Mr. Mayor?
So, yeah.
Do you have a proclamation on tonight's agenda?
Yeah, it's coming up.
You want to do that after public forum?
No, I'm going to read that next, and then we'll open up the public forum. Thank you. So I just want to remind the public, for those interested in participating in this meeting tonight, will please refrain from disruptive behavior. This will include making loud noises, clapping, shouting, or engaging in any other activity in a manner that disturbs, disrupts, or impedes the orderly conduct of this meeting. Public participation is and will remain at the discretion of the mayor. So I have a proclamation to read this evening. This is for the Love Lives Here campaign. Whereas as mayor of the city of Sandpoint, I am committed to upholding and protecting the civil and human rights of all individuals, regardless of their race, creed, religion, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, national origin, or immigration status, and denounce any acts of racism, bigotry, xenophobia, religious discrimination, anti-Semitism, and acts of discrimination based on a victim's gender, sexual orientation, or gender identity. Whereas the Sandpoint community and its, its public image, democratic institutions, and economy are under threat from groups that use bigotry to build power, and that, while marginalized communities in Sandpoint are most vulnerable, our business community, public officials, neighborhoods, and schools have also been targeted by these groups. Whereas our values and our livelihoods depend on keeping Sandpoint inclusive and its residents, workers, and visitors safe from bigotry and violence, promoting mutual respect and open dialogue between all members of the community and local government, including law enforcement. Whereas it is our duty to uphold these values and to fiercely protect the safety and security of all individuals. Whereas it is my belief that our community is dedicated to love, unity, inclusivity, equity, and respect for not only all residents of Sandpoint and the state of Idaho, but all people on this great earth. Whereas there is no freedom or liberty unless everyone is treated equally. Therefore, I Shelby Ronstadt, mayor of Sandpoint, Idaho, do hereby proclaim that the message of hate has no place in Sandpoint, and all are welcome. Proclaimed and signed the 17th day of June in the year 2020. Is Rebecca Holland, she's here, okay. Do you like to receive this, Rebecca? Come down with you. Okay. So as I said, we'll do 20 minutes at the beginning, and then for those who didn't get in in that 20 minutes, we'll open it up again at the end of the meeting. And this gives the public the opportunity to address counsel regarding items that are listed on the consent calendar or on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. In the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments, but simply state your support for those comments. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Do not direct any questions to the mayor, city council, or city staff during your comments, please. Before you begin your comment, you will please state your name and whether you are a Sandpoint city resident. If you reside outside city limits but own property or a business within city limits, you're welcome to state as much. If you wish to speak on a specific topic itemized on the agenda, please do not speak at this time, but there will be time during that particular agenda item that you can address that topic. When it's your turn to speak, the clerk will call your name, or I will call your name, at which time you can come forward to the podium there, introduce yourself, and please state whether or not you reside within city limits. And again, you'll have three minutes to speak. And Rebecca, is she still here? I'm sorry, I meant to give you a moment, Rebecca, if you wanted to speak upon reception of that proclamation. Would you like to start it off tonight?
I would.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We good? Good evening. Hi, my name is Rebecca Holland. For the record, I've lived in Selly Valley 45 years and have a business in Sandpoint now in its 31st year. I am pleased as a member of the North Idaho Women's Leadership Team in partnership with Bonner County Human Rights Task Force to announce our new kindness program for businesses and organizations that will promote racial and gender equality. We are all familiar with the Love Lives Here signs we see posted on fences, garages, and in the gardens of residents' home. But now in addition, our local businesses will have the opportunity to express the same beautiful sentiment regarding diversity and in opposition to the prejudices, systematic racial prejudices which are being addressed here and across our nation. After a business owner signs our declaration, which I just gave to you, they will be given this very cool sticker and for their front entry. It shows that through that door, the owner and the workers are actively upholding human rights for all individuals of any race, creed, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, national origin, or immigration status. Additionally, business owners will be given a response guide on the confidential matters and with manner in which they can report a harassment should their business receive it. Here on the West Coast, the Western States Alliance tracks harassment and hate crimes. We know we can't uproot problems unless we understand the extent of them, and we know our next key need here will be on education for our youth, our citizens, our city and county employees, and public officials, and our school district educators. Time is now to be the change we want to see in the world and in our community. We chose the summer solstice to launch this kindness program. I want to extend a very special thanks to Mayor Shelby for his proclamation given courageously at this pivotal point of political unrest. Please let us all be as brave and unwavering by turning to the bright, positive light signified in this message that love lives here, Sandpoint. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Dave Jan Natter, are you here?
Hi, for the record, my name is David Van Natter. I've lived in Bonner County for about 50 years, in and out of Sandpoint, working in and out of Sandpoint, but currently reside in Priest River. I'm mostly here just to support the police department. We also do volunteer fire department, EMT stuff, and sometimes we mutual aid to Sandpoint. Sometimes Sandpoint comes to Priest River and mutual aids over there, and I've always been treated very respectfully when they pulled me over and gave me a ticket. And I love all the police officers. And I want to read the original Loves That Lives Here document. This was, the date of this is July 4, 1776. "We have these true self-evidence that all men are created equal. They are endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. To secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving just powers from the consent of the governed." So this has always been in America, it just, we've had some bad apples, and let's hopefully none of us want to be bad apples, and we want to all love each other the best we can. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Natter. Appreciate those comments. Krista Eberly? Is Krista Eberly outside? Give her a moment.
Hi, I'm David.
Krista Eberly?
Krista Eberly.
Okay, Everly, thank you. If you can please state your name for the record, whether or not you reside in the city of Sandpoint, and you have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Krista Everly. I do not reside in the city of Sandpoint, half a mile outside of the city limits. I am here today regarding the Loves Lives Here campaign, and I would like to thank you, Mayor Shelby, for having the courage to step up and support this campaign. And I just wanted to say that every person who is supporting this campaign is really a true patriot of our beautiful country. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Everly. Appreciate those comments. Daniel Mimick? Daniel Mimick? Daniel Mimick?
Daniel Mimick?
Yeah.
Can you kind of get a lineup going, Shelby?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Well, he's being sought. Okay, yeah, come on in, sir. Yep, and if we can just start a line over here against the wall would be great. Anita, I see you're here. I'm going to call on you next. Robert Rosenderry, you'll be next.
Is Robert in the room, or is he outside? Robert's right here.
Okay, we got him. Yeah, that'd be great. Please, sir, if you can state your name for the record, whether or not you reside in the city, and you have three minutes.
I live in the county, and I'd just like to speak in general.
Okay.
What, what concerns me most at this point is that we have an upcoming Independence Day celebration. And my focus has always been on the children of Sandpoint, and I'm very, very concerned that the content of this parade that's coming up will not have that child-friendly, family-friendly feeling to it. For the last 24 years that I've been here, I've always counted on that. And a lot of the times, when we send those children out early in the 10 o'clock, at 10 o'clock, when the kids go by themselves with their parents, that has always been a time for those children to shine. Apparently, and we, I'm not sure exactly when or where or the decision is going to be made, but it looks like they've eliminated that children's parade. I've been an advocate for children here in town for the last 27 years, and these kids need that parade. It's incredibly important, but apparently the organizers of this have canceled that children, children's parade. And I think that's my main issue, that I really think that as a community, we need to value those children's contribution to the parade. And as it turns farther and farther towards the adult, and the adult issues that are going to be proposed in this parade, I'm really concerned that those children won't get their, they'll get left behind in the conversation. So my, my concern is to value those children. I'd like to see that children's parade that succeeds, that proceeds the major, the major parade. And if it's not that way, I think the mix between the children and the adults in the parade will be a mix that isn't really supportive of those children. So that is my, my issue. I'd like us to, I'd like this prioritize those children when it comes to this parade, because I really think that the opposite of that is probably going to take place in my, in my view, and I'm really concerned that the children will be affected by that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those comments. Appreciate that.
My name is Anita Arrett. I live in the city limits, and I have--
The clock, please, clerk? Thanks. Please continue.
Okay. My time's whisking away here. I appreciated the mayor saying the message of hate has no place in Sandpoint, and I couldn't agree more. There've been many accusations recently regarding the lack of tolerance in this community. Intolerance is wrong. Hate is wrong, no matter where it comes from. And it's important to recognize that hate and intolerance come from many sectors. Far too often, the words racist, Nazis, vigilantes, and other divisive labels have been used to brand Christians, conservatives, and people with differing opinions by many in this community, and that sows division. Recently, when encouragement was given for certain groups to add more graffiti on clean property, despite a no trespassing sign on that property, I found myself saddened at the divisiveness this issue created, and I wondered what voices will be condoned and allowed to be expressed by citizens in approved graffiti areas? Will I be able to bring my chalk and add my political statement? I've lived in Sandpoint for 15 years, but now, instead of being only insulted and hurt by comments and allegations, I find myself fearful and concerned by actual threats. Today, a local person posted the following in a local activist group. The post has been removed now, but it has been screen captured. It said, "Symbolic resistance always feels good, but it becomes substantive when it forces change and challenges institutions. They should do this, not just to shine lights, but vandalize and demolish at every problematic precinct." This sadly, in my opinion, is the culmination of the divisiveness and name-calling in our community. I'm saddened by what I see in this town I live in, and in this town where I run a business. And now I have to worry about my own personal safety. I'm going to finish with a quote from a pastor I greatly admire. His name is Timothy Keller. It wraps up my thoughts on this tolerance discussion. His quote says, "Tolerance isn't about not having beliefs. It's about how your beliefs lead you to treat people that disagree with you."
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Arrett. Appreciate that. Could I remind everybody, too, to please turn off your cell phone or turn it to vibrate if you haven't already? Thank you. Mr. Rosenderry?
My name is Robert Rosenderry. I'm not a resident of this town, but I have a lot of friends here, and I'm here to talk to you about unity and racism. Do you know the names Tawanza Baker? Do you know the name Suzie Baker? June 7, or July 17, 2015, they were murdered in the South Carolina shooting. My cousin Tawanza stepped in front of my aunt and was shot point-blank. Does that happen here? Does that happen here in Sandpoint? But you guys parade BLM in this divisive action that you're doing in this town, and that's just not the way. That doesn't happen here. I walked up and down this street today, people waving, smiling. "Hey, Robert, how you doing?" I don't know any of these people. But on Facebook, it's, this town is painted as, just like she just said, it's a war zone, stuff painted on the grounds. People-- stuff painted on the grounds, people attacking other people for their opinions, a lack of leadership. So does that happen here? You have BLM outside the door for Black Lives Matter. I'm that black life. Why are you speaking for me here? Why are those kids on the opposite side of the door waiting to come in and berate these good people, who just want to live their life in this town? Why is there a Black Lives Matter here, at all? Why do you have the cuffs on those men's hands and policing the police like they're breaking laws? Take the cuffs off of those men. Let these people live their life the way they want to live it, without division, without BLM, without hate groups, in a town that is 99.9% white. I'm like one of the five chocolate chips in the cookie here. Literally. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Rosendary.
Hi, I'm Susan Drumheller, and I actually live in Sagel. And I wanted to thank you for standing up for tolerance and diversity and human rights. I'm encouraged that you're looking into ways to support creative expression of these core local values. I know that the pro-gun and pro-militia folks here are really incredibly well-organized. And frankly, I think the majority of people who live here are really not that organized. And I think a lot of us really do not feel the need for a private militia to protect us. I'm actually okay with our police force. I don't have any problems with them. My only complaint was when they called the militia downtown patriots. In my mind, they're not patriots, in my opinion. The true patriots were the young people who have been organizing protests in a wave of compassion. And yes, it's true, we hardly have any people of color in our town. But I think these young people are compassionate for those people who may not feel comfortable here. And in a place where armed militia run around in camo for no legitimate reason, I feel the need to change that, and I feel like your proclamation is a step in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
I'm Sandy Nicholson, a resident of Dover. And I'm just here in support of the proclamation that the mayor just gave in support of Love Lives Here. I had the misfortune of stepping into town one evening, a normal evening for our family. We had been on the lake all day, and all of a sudden, our hometown had been inundated with what looked like a red dawn. And you can imagine that it was quite shocking. And I have quite a bit of video footage of asking what was going on, why this is happening. And the large percent were in a parking lot in our county courthouse, and they said that they were here to allow the protesters to protest, but they better not hurt our town. As we all found out later, these protesters are our children. So we were told by a parking lot full of people with assault rifles that they were going to allow our children to exercise their First Amendment right. I am a professional in human resources, and our country was founded on what you heard earlier, the right to pursue happiness. And that founding was created for white men who owned land. It wasn't created for me, as a woman. And so later on, we had the EEO come up with added laws for employment for anti-discrimination. Now, in our town, it's time to take the next step to proclaim that we are anti-discriminatory as a town. And so I appreciate your courage, Mayor, and I support it.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Nicholson. Appreciate it.
My name is Steve Muslak. I'm a city resident. I'm a business owner here. I came for a couple of reasons. Number one, I find the mayor's language very divisive when discussing legally armed citizens. This is Idaho, this is our right. Vigilante, intimidation, harassment, were some of the words he has been talking about legally armed citizens while calling the protesters peaceful protesters. So they protested, and they didn't loot stores, therefore, they're peaceful. Why were we not called peaceful armed citizens, since we were legally armed and there were no incidents? The language is clear that there's a side being picked. Shelby's talked about not knowing about our training, our accountability. If he really wanted to know, he could have came down and talked to us, as he did with the BLM protesters. He would have learned a lot. Ex-military, firearms instructors, paramedics. I was a licensed private security guard. I've been trained in de-escalation, use of less-lethal crowd control. I was carrying multiple less-lethal tools. I teach the enhanced concealed carry class. I've been a firearm instructor for over a decade. A large portion of the class deals with when justified force is, or when lethal force is justified, how to avoid conflict, how to de-escalate. If you had taken the time to speak with us, you might know this, but you didn't. Your message to me is one of division. And I want to thank Andy Groth. I want to thank Joel Asprey. I want to thank John Darling, who's not here, for speaking out and going against what you said, and then speaking the truth to some of the citizens that they talked to. Andy Groth, we met you the other day. You reached out, you shook our hands, you gave me your phone number, and you gave Ron our phone number. You said, "Anytime you want to talk, man. I didn't vote for you last time, I'm voting for you this time." You know, you are, you're trying to bring this community together, and that is not the message I get from the mayor. I really appreciate that, and I think that bringing the town together is really important. If anything had happened that night, our police force couldn't have handled it. We've got 20 sworn officers. If 100 people came into this town, start throwing Molotov cocktails, I'm sorry, it couldn't have been dealt with by Corey's own statements, that we don't have enough people to deal with it. You said business owners were intimidated and harassed and lost business. I walked around for a half an hour today downtown, and I said, in a little statement, "I, a Sandpoint business owner with a downtown storefront, would like to express my support for the armed citizens who came out to protect our town against any possible threats. I felt safer knowing these citizens were there. I did not lose business because of their presence, and did not feel like their presence was intimidating or harassing." I've got nine signatures in a half an hour. So apparently, you didn't talk to all the citizens downtown. I had citizens who told me they didn't want to sign this, because they were intimidated by potentially the city council going against them, and somebody coming out, because one of the city council members came out and was not very friendly when they got the answer they didn't want, which was, "I did support these armed men." And the answer they got was, "You're the only one," and they walked out. So we have a legal right to be there, we're going to be there, and it's our right as Idaho citizens. We were there to protect this town. That was the only reason we were there. The language used against us is hurtful, and that's all I have to say.
Jane?
I'm going to say, you're next, after she goes. Okay, thank you. Is Amy? I'm on hot.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Jane Purdy. I live outside of city limits in the town of Le Cleed. I believe that in our town, our community, our county, and our state, that the voice of reason, sanity, and common sense will prevail. Chalk is innocent on a city sidewalk when a five-year-old is the artist, less innocent when it's an undisciplined 15-year-old, and downright unacceptable and potentially dangerous when someone older takes illicit liberties. According to our own city code and IDT, this behavior is unacceptable, and I don't know why it's being encouraged by those in leadership who ought to know better. Can you imagine the outcry if a conservative constitution supporter did the initial tagging? But in general, you'll rarely find a conservative constitution supporter behaving in such a manner, because they were taught to respect authority, uphold legitimate law, and support our law enforcement. It seems the purpose of this chalk graffiti is to support the BLM. There are two kinds of racism. There's the kind that the Idahoans sent packing 20 years ago in the Kootenay County, because they didn't belong here. And then there's the kind that pities them and sees their color, ethnicity, minority as a reason to pillage and plunder. The opposite of racism sees no color. This great country has given each one of us opportunities found nowhere else in the world, regardless of your ethnicity, and it's no different in North Idaho. Myself and my community will continue to call for sanity and safety in our state, and will not allow paid actors or well-meaning, poorly-educated, undisciplined characters to destroy our lives, our livelihoods, our homes, and our businesses. And on the tale of what Steve said, there was, I was downtown the day of the protest, and went into several businesses, and had several calls asking who they can call for help if someone threatens their business and wanted armed support. And there were several businesses who thanked us for being there. We are not there to frighten anyone or to cause any problems. We're there to ensure safety and security. And if all is peaceful, then all is well. And there's a reason why North Idaho has been peaceful, because we are armed, and we are a polite society, and we do respect one another. And I suggest that we teach our children the same.
We got one more than the mayor mentioned earlier, where they're going to cut it off. So Ryan, you'll be the last one to go. We'll come back to the list.
Thank you, Chief.
Before I speak, I just want to say something. The stuff that I have to say and the evidence I have is going to be pretty harsh, not direct at the city council, but towards the mayor, and I have evidence to support this. So if you're okay with me going past the three-minute mark on the last person, or if y'all want to wait, I can wait till the very end of this meeting. But this is something that I think this entire community really needs to hear.
Ryan, you only get three minutes.
Okay, I'll try to.
Are you going to do it now, or are you going to wait?
Okay. I'll try to go through as fast as I can, and I'll let the city council decide if they would like to hear more.
Thank you.
Okay. I grew up in New Orleans, Louisiana. Oh, first, before I say, I do not live in the city, I live in Bonner County. So I grew up in New Orleans, Louisiana, in surrounding areas, the deep south, for 22 years. I served in the Marines with active duty reserve. I served alongside men and women of all races, creeds, religions, backgrounds, et cetera. In the military, we don't see race, we see family, only brothers and sisters. In the Marines, we are all green, and we judge ourselves based on our actions and nothing more. I was around people of color my whole life, much more than 99.9% of the people in this town can say, including the mayor. One of my siblings has black grandparents. I have black and Hispanic friends in this committee I talk to weekly, if not daily. One of my groomsmen at my wedding will be African-American, because guess what? My childhood best friend is black. I have role models and mentors who are black. So no, I'm not a racist, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the events on June 2nd, regarding the actions of demonstrators that day, from 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM, I saw nothing but a unified and loving community. We were welcomed by numerous people, many of which brought us food, drinks, friendly conversation, expressions of their gratitude. I was personally asked to take photos with many of them, including their children and pets. The vast majority of the people who approached us were in support of us being armed and willing to protect the community should a need arise. So your blanket statements about the entire community fearing and not wanting us there is a blatant lie. The mayor and I had a civilized conversation as he and the Black Lives Matter protesters were passing through downtown. While this discussion remained civil, the mayor asked clearly instigative questions in an attempt to get a negative reaction from me, to which he was unsuccessful. Each time I spoke against senseless violence, he would imply that all of the armed men and women in Sandpoint that day were solely there to fight with the protesters. I clarified that we were there to prevent any and all violence. He didn't seem to like that answer, as if he were hoping I were there to be an aggressor of some sort. Throughout our conversation, his wife was there videotaping the interaction. After 10 minutes, she cut the video with a look of disgust on her face. She was visibly upset that I was not feeding it to his inflammatory line of questioning. Moments later, she, while still talking to the mayor, I heard her say to someone on the phone that, quote-unquote, "We will be there shortly. He is talking to some racist redneck," close quote. I was caught off-guard by her statement that she clearly said loud enough for me to hear, needless to say, I didn't respond to her attempt to give me upset, all while the mayor didn't bat an eye when this was said. The mayor had this discussion with me that he himself called civil, yet he and his wife refused to post this to social media. Why not mention the video if they are both for honesty and unity in our community? The answer is that they want division. The mayor just wanted social.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to hear anymore?
Your time is up.
Okay.
Sir, your time is up.
No, no, no. No, no, no. No, no.
I didn't want to go, so I just want to ask the council.
I'm letting you know, your time is up.
Okay. We'll carry this on next time.
Thank you. Next up?
Mayor, that's it. That's your 30 minutes.
That's it? Okay, thank you.
We're going to come back to public comment as soon as that.
Okay. Well, now, move on to the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,083,648.91, reflecting $248,929.22 for regular payables, $834,719.69 for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Okay. I would certainly appreciate, and I do appreciate the council's confirmation of Jim Quinn on the Historic Preservation Commission for his three-year term. I think he'll be of great service to the city there, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Same.
Seconded. They moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there a real call vote?
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Asprey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes. Oh, no, he's not in. Sorry. Yes. Sorry. Okay. The first item in our old business this evening is a proposed ordinance regarding sidewalk cafes. Following the recent amendment to City Code Title VII, Chapter 2, this is an additional proposed amendment seeking flexibility for placement of sidewalk cafe tables and chairs. Essentially, it's the striking of one sentence on the ordinance that was amended a couple of weeks ago, and that removes the requirement that the tables and chairs be located against the building only. Is, Corey, is he getting, is Jeff Nizzoli here, or anyone who wants to speak on behalf of the downtown businesses? Mr. Nizzoli, please take the podium.
Melissa.
Jeff, did anyone else come that wants to speak in support of this?
No one was able to come, because they're all working, but I do have nine signatures from nine different restaurants within a block of Icarus. First, I want to apologize for not being here last month. I know this came up last month's meeting, but I was told by various city employees and a couple of council people that it was just going to be about the fencing issue. I didn't learn that the table placement issue was also part of the ordinance until I read it the next day. So that's what I'm here today, is to ask that the table placements being adjacent to the building be eliminated from the ordinance. We've gone through two years of construction. Obviously, it was, you know, financial hardship for a lot of us. Our sidewalks got improved. We really appreciate that. Now, we're just asking if we can utilize those improved sidewalks. In various locations in Sandpoint, there's ways to use the bigger sidewalks that isn't adjacent to the building. And I feel that it's actually more safe for the public if you put, in certain locations, put the tables either parallel to the curb, leaving for car doors, or on the big bump-out areas over by the flower boxes and planters, and leaving that 60-inch ADA as a straight line. You don't have to walk around tables. So I do have eight different restaurants that also support the idea of eliminating the adjacent-to-the-building table placement, which is asking for more flexibility for us to utilize the sidewalks for each individual establishment, using ADA as the requirement, you know, not other requirements. So we all know that the 24 inches from the curb and the 60 inches of flat, unobstructed sidewalk. So that's what I'm asking. Some other restaurateurs also in Sandpoint are asking.
And for the record, could you list the other restaurateurs, the other establishments that support this request?
Some were listed, I believe, on the original application to be on the agenda.
Okay.
And then I have actually acquired other ones, but AMPs, Baxter's, Idaho Port Authority, Deluna's, Icarus, Macduff's, Fat Pig, Pondry Winery. Jim Boe from the winery was here earlier, but because of the size of the crowd, decided just to let me speak and represent him on this. He's one that has the big bump-outs, so can place tables further away from the building, and then leave a nice wide sidewalk open for restaurants.
Okay, great.
For Icarus, our ability, we go, if we do, the way the ordinance is written now, we'll have room for four chairs. If we, if the adjacent to the building is eliminated, we'd have the ability to have 12 people, still leaving the 60 inches, and Amanda and I take a tape to that. So, you know, it expands us 300 to 400. So, you know, it expands us 300 to 400, you know, percent, you know, just our establishment. But every establishment's a little bit different. All the sidewalks, they all got wider, but some got a lot wider than others, so.
Okay.
That's my request.
Any questions you asked, Mayor? So I really appreciate you coming in, as well as taking the time to talk to the other businesses. I've spent a couple, couple weekends walking around to kind of see how it's worked out. I know that this is a work in progress, and I agree with you. Downtown looks great. We have these big, huge sidewalks, and it, it's sad that you guys are restricted with your floor spacing inside, and I think it's, it is, we, I appreciate the creativity that we're trying to make as much accommodation as we can when there's other things that are imposed on you guys that are out of control. So as long as this isn't problematic with ADA compliance, and Amanda, if you think that this is reasonable as far as the seating of placements, I think it's our responsibility to help our businesses increase their square footage for their seating as best as we possibly can. And obviously, we're revisiting it now. If it works out, or we find some other things, we can revisit again, right?
Yeah.
So I, again, really appreciate you coming in and explaining this to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So does this restrict outdoor seating to either adjacent to the building or alongside the roadway, or is it just up to the discretion of the restaurant?
As is written now, the tables have to be adjacent to the building.
Sure. But if we change it to allow for more flexibility, is a restaurant, I guess I'm addressing this to Amanda, or whoever, are they able to place tables both adjacent to the building as well as farther away across the sidewalk? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I would say it depends. It depends on the situation. It depends on the actual width of the sidewalk. It depends on the slope of the sidewalk. There's just a lot of different factors that would play into that decision. There's certainly not a one-size-fits-all in our downtown.
Okay. And if we were to allow for additional flexibility and there were to be some issues with ADA compliance or just complaints in general, how is that to be addressed?
We would restrict a permit with conditions, and/or we, at times, may be in a position where we're unable to issue a permit.
So it's really a case-by-case basis. But this allow, if we allow for more flexibility, we adopt this change amendment, restaurants place their tables out according to what their interpretation of this amendment, then we just have to wait and see if there's any issues with ADA. Is that correct?
Not quite. So they apply for a permit. Through that application process, they're required to submit a drawing to us with dimensions. We actually go out and verify the dimensions and the conditions. We have it reviewed by our ADA coordinator, who is the one that's the most qualified, to review it from an ADA compliance. That review is really dependent upon a lot of factors, not just the sidewalk, but the type of tables, the type of chairs. A lot of different things go into that evaluation. And then we would have a conversation with the business owner and say, hey, you know, what works, this is what we're seeing, what do you see, and try to come up with something that we could both agree upon. If we can't come to terms, then we most likely wouldn't issue a permit.
Okay, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to, to understand is if permits have already been issued to exist, to businesses, and, and we change or adopt an amendment that changes things a little bit, do they have to?
Issue a permit.
Okay, you have, that's what I'm trying to get at. Okay, thank you.
Sorry. The permit is issued based upon a very specific drawing that shows exactly where the tables are going to be placed.
Okay.
If they serve alcohol, that plan of where those exact tables are going has to be submitted to the alcohol board for their approval as well. So we actually don't approve it until we have that as, in addition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. Yeah?
Amanda, I just want to make sure, being good stewards of finances, is that, that we are going to be ADA compliant? I mean, I, I just want to make sure of that, because the last thing that the city needs is a lawsuit. And so would that be, again, case by case, or?
I think it's probably a question for our attorney.
Oh, okay.
If that's okay.
I think, or Jennifer. I think what it might be helpful in the context, actually, of both questions, and specifically to your question, maybe for a little bit of history and background too on with the ordinance that had been presented at the last council meeting, where staff was in landing that adjacency to the building. So the five-minute, the, the five-foot walkway that's required on the sidewalks is the minimum that is required to meet ADA requirements. And there had been a lot of discussion with our division heads about how to try to provide more flexibility and accommodate the businesses with the crafting of, of the ordinance, and us not really having done this on a large scale before. And so how to approach it this year in a way that would provide the flexibility that, but would balance some of the other challenges, such as the minimum requirements for ADA, but those are minimum, and how to achieve those minimum requirements and ensure that we have passable walkways when we hit peak tourist seasons. And, and so that's, that's where they landed on the one side versus the other. The adjacency to the building, where they landed on that is, and I sat in, in these meetings with the division heads discussing it, it was around weighing the issue of alcohol service and how we approach that moving forward. If we've got now seating across the walkway, there's alcohol service crossing the sidewalk, is there a perception, is there an appearance of we now are, alcohol can just go down the street? And if it's across the way now, they need service staff to provide service across the sidewalk, not just adjacent to the building. So now we've got servers crossing back and forth, in addition to individuals who are covered under the ADA accessibility and just generous, general tourist traffic going up and down the street. In addition to the ADA requirements, so there's the five-foot walkway, but slope becomes an issue too. So the discussion around the slope had been around covering in the, in the pathway areas and our paver areas. There are some areas, like in front of Icarus, where the sloping meets ADA requirements, and you could do seating across there. There are other areas then that we will have businesses that see seating is allowed across the, the sidewalk, and there is a slope there that they may not be able to see, and it puts staff in the position where they can't allow the seating there across from, across the sidewalk. So those were kind of some of the challenges. And then in addition to the ADA requirements, then the other consideration was people getting out of their cars, because we've got the mix of the 45-degree angled parking as well as the parallel parking. So where there may be seating areas next to their parallel parking, we've got to be able to accommodate a door opening, and now people likely walking across that, that paver area to access the sidewalk to go wherever it is that they're going. So those were kind of all the, the challenges where staff came in with the, the recommendation of, on a trial basis, adjacent, adjacent to the building. Since then, we've seen kind of a pop-up all over the place, which to some extent was kind of what the concern was with, with developing this as a, as a pilot program, is that, again, you would have that perception of fairness, which we, we talked a lot about in, in strategic planning. And, and so we've got, currently, we've got seating out now that is not ADA compliant, and we've been trying to work with owners on, on getting that addressed. In addition, we are starting to see complaints come in already on our web forums and on Engage about the walkability of our sidewalks currently, with kind of the configuration of, of what we've got going on downtown. And I think Andy may be able to speak again a little bit further to some of the ADA concerns. I think he, he was downtown, he was walking downtown today, and then Fonda, also our, our attorney who works primarily with PNC, we were downtown yesterday, walking a few areas too, and she brought up some of the concerns about potential liability for us with just what we've got going on right now with the proliferation of things on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't profess to be an expert in ADA, but the, the minimum width, width is only one component of being in compliance with those requirements. The one thing that we want to make sure is that we don't incur some liability, because we don't have a, a set-out plan for how we're going to accomplish those goals. We have asked if somebody's going to apply to have service outside, outside of their, their stores or their businesses, that they're going to sign a, a liability waiver indemnifying the city from any loss, but we don't have those in place right now either. So the city could possibly be in the position of being, in a position being liable if something would happen from an ADA standpoint. I think that Jennifer makes a good point in that we tried originally to do this in a manner that we thought would be compliant with ADA requirements. It may, it may be that we can, we don't have to have that in one set form or fashion, but I think it's incumbent upon the, the city to make sure that regardless of what we do, we do it in conformance with those requirements under the ADA.
May I say something? What I'm requesting, I don't feel that table placement, ADA is still obviously going to have to be, you know, followed. So table placement doesn't change the ADA. If you have it parallel to the curb, like we've tried, you still have the ADA compliant on the other side. From the address of, if there's tables on the curb side that the waitstaff or people are moving in a perpendicular direction of the, you know, sidewalk flow, if you have adjacent tables in front of Icarus, the staff is still going to go into the sidewalk to serve those tables, right? You're still going to have flow into that. So I feel that the tables, with the more flexibility of placement, will address ADA and won't cause more liability.
Thank you. Yep.
Do, is there a timeline on when the waiver, the indemnity waiver could be?
That's a really good question. So all of the permits expire every year. At that time, the, the need for the waiver becomes moot. Every year, they have to reapply, and every year, they sign a new waiver. So the, the permits are issued through October 15th. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff, for that presentation. Appreciate it. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this issue? Yeah? Please come to the podium and state your name, whether or not you reside in the city, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jolene Wolf. I do not reside in the city, but I own property within city limits, and I am also a business owner in Sandpoint. So I am here to support Jeff Nizzoli and Icarus and all of the restaurateurs within Sandpoint. We, as business owners, have had a really difficult time with the pandemic, having to close down, having to create new guidelines and get a lot of things in place to still sustain our lives. And I think that it's really, really important for us to support our businesses here. And we're a tourist town, and when I walk down the street and I see people outside on a sunny day eating, it actually makes me really happy, because I'm like, wow, look at that. Like, this is such a cool little town. That's how it makes me feel, right? So I feel like we need to support our businesses. If there aren't any places to eat here, if there aren't any businesses here, then what is Sandpoint? Nothing. It's a place to have a house and be at home. But if there's no businesses, there's, there's no livelihood, there's no community. There, it's so, I support this, because I believe in our businesses, and pretty much that's it. And I also wanted to thank you for your proclamation. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Appreciate those comments. Anyone else that wants to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Well, let me read the title first. "In ordinance of the City of Sandpoint and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, amending Chapter 2 of Title VII, Sandpoint City Code. Pretending to sidewalk cafes, providing that this provision shall be deemed severable and that remaining sections of Sandpoint City Code shall not be affected by finding that these provisions are unlawful or unenforceable, and providing for public publication and an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only and the summaries approved." So moved. Seconded. They moved and seconded, that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only and the summaries approved. This will be, oh, is there any discussion? This'll be a roll-call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilman Groot?
I trust our businesses and I trust our staff. Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once an ordinance's entirety be suspended, and that the ordinance pass its second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion? So moved. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. This'll be a roll-call vote.
Councilwoman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passed, and this ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under suspension of the rules. The next item under Old Business is a final update for the Downtown Revitalization Project. Infrastructure and Development Services Manager Amanda Wilson will provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you see my screen? Yes, okay. So I am going to do my best to keep this brief and then open it up for any questions. I know we've talked a lot about the Downtown Revitalization Project. Most of you are very familiar with it and have experienced it firsthand as well. We did a story update, so I'm going to scroll through that really quick. As far as a project status, we recently just finished Phase 2 from Cedar at Second all the way to Church on First. That project included full reconstruction, building face to building face. I'm sure many of you have already been downtown, but you can read here in our bullet list a lot of the improvements. It was a complete rehab, lots of things from stormwater improvements to the new sidewalks that we just discussed, to ornamental lights, parking spaces. We get a lot of questions about why is there a shift in the road alignment? That's called a chicane. It's intended to intentionally slow down the flow of traffic to encourage the area to be safer and more accommodating for pedestrians and businesses. We also have improved crosswalks and various bike racks. We have replaced a lot of the existing bike racks, allowed some to stay. And then we also have new benches. If you've noticed, the benches that are in the paver section are now backless, so you can sit either direction. So if we have a parade, you can watch it. If you want to face the sidewalk, you can do that as well. So I think overall, it seems that most are pleased with it. So thank you for your, your compliments on that. In the past, I have shared them with the crews. Key timelines I highlighted in the story, we actually started the design back in 2013. Many of you were involved in what's known as the Downtown Streets Plan and Design Guide that was adopted by council in 2013. It served as the concept design and baseline for our final engineering for downtown. The engineering itself and the construction documents kicked off on August 6th. I'm not going to read every date to you here, but basically, onsite work began on September 3rd. We had a winter shutdown in the middle of that, and it was substantially complete by May 14th, with final completion by June 5th. The contractor completed all work on time. All the durations and the milestones that you see there are in accordance with the original contract and the original dates. So we're really pleased with our team and with the contractor for getting everything So we're really pleased with our team and with the contractor for getting everything done on time despite the many, many challenges that are just part of doing construction on any construction project, but with the COVID situation as well, there were a lot of factors and they still pulled it off. So really proud of them for that. Who did the work? Century West Engineers, Green Play, and Tranderra were our primary folks on the design team. The prime contractor was Sunray Enterprises LLC out of Sandpoint. There are many, many suppliers and subcontractors and individuals that helped with this project that are not listed, but I wanted to at least highlight the key ones that served as the leads in their respective areas. Quality assurance was performed by HMH Engineers and city staff Bruce Robertson. Construction management was really solely by our city engineer, Dan Tadic. I was involved at a pretty minimal level. I really give Dan hats off for a job well done on this project. As far as budget compared to costs and wanted to kind of show you all phases, this is a spreadsheet that we've shown you in the past right before you're about to approve a contract. So we have our Downtown Revitalization Phase One, which was Cedar Street at Fifth to Cedar at Second. It's a little bit hard to maneuver on this story here, but here on the left-hand side, can you see my cursor? This column represents the original planned budget. This column represents our actual and/or forecasted costs. I won't read all of them to you, but I will at least note that our final cost on Phase Two was less, about 12.5% less than our planned budget. And we also have the ornamental lights, the green pedestrian lights that have gone in. Those are a separate contract grant funded and those final costs are anticipated at The costs for Phase Two, as you can see, are very comparable to the total costs for Phase One. And then the total budget at the top has not changed. So these amounts remain the same. So the savings from Phase One and Phase Two have rolled into a pool of money at this time for a Phase Three in the future. As is noted at the top of the story, we're currently anticipating design of a Phase Three in 2021 with construction starting in 2022, 2023.
So total savings of $62,000 and change for Phase One and Two?
It's about $768,000.
Oh, is that just Phase Two? Did we see that? The total forecasted remaining funds?
Forecasted remaining?
Is it the bottom of the page there?
This?
Yeah. The $62,000, yeah, at the bottom. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's really hard to see on my screen. Have to look maybe at yours. I only see half of it. So no, that is just showing you a share of, yeah, that is remaining for SURA-funded. So it's just a calculation in this spreadsheet. So the columns to the right are representing the funding source. So this column, I'll find it. I tried to point. So this column here is general fund. This column is SURA and this column to the right is CDPG.
So a total savings of over $700,000?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thanks. That rolled into a potential Phase Three. And with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Counsel? I don't have any questions, but I know that you had mentioned Dan was a portion of the lead on this and you gave a lot of credit to him. Okay, that's wonderful. I'm going to give some credit to you because I went down and talked to quite a few people and you did a great job as a liaison and a communicator. There's one individual that makes some amazing woodwork, Corey. He's got nothing but great things to say about you. He says that your relationship has been constructively challenging. And so thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you. Corey's wonderful himself. So.
Great. Great, thank you, Amanda. Appreciate that. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this issue? Right, seeing none, we'll move on. The final item under Old Business is a proposed resolution for approval of an amendment to the 2020 license agreement for Sandpoint Farmers Market. Special Advance Coordinator Mary Malone will provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't have a long presentation tonight, but I do have Kelly from the Farmers Market and she'll come up and talk in just a moment. But I was going to pull up the amendment, but I was having trouble with my camera staying on, so I had to get it to pull up. If you could pull that up, that'd be great. But basically, the amendment, the Farmers Market approached me last week wanting to go back to the traditional location at the park, Farm &amp; Park, and also reinstate, win state markets. So the amendment just basically would take them back there. Staff prepared the amendment to the original agreement. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to.
Kelly, would you like to come forward and say a few words?
Come in?
You don't have to.
Yeah.
If you can come to the podium. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me. Yeah, Mary kind of summed it up. This Friday, we're going to be exiting the Rebound Idaho, the staged reopening. And so the Farmers Market feels as if we have followed the protocol really well and we feel like we're ready to move back to Farm &amp; Park. And we'll still be practicing our own rules and regulations in accordance with the state, but also as far as how we see fit. You know, if we see an uptick in cases, then we can kind of regulate it as needed, but we'd like to move back to Farm &amp; Park.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Yeah.
I just want to give you a great compliment that all the research that you did before moving it to the city parking lot, I was really impressed with when the staff presented it, all the work that you did yourself to make sure that you were compliant. So I just wanted you to know that that was really great and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Well done, Kelly.
In addition, just I hope that you're able to feel how important Farmers Market is to Sandpoint. There's been, and there's been a lot in media that people saying that they feel like summer is here and that they feel like they've come out of this COVID process and in large part is because they were able to go to Farmers Market. So you have an incredible value to our community.
Yes, thank you. We feel that.
All right. Okay, thanks, Kelly. Appreciate it. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for amendment to license agreement for Farmers Market 2020. So moved.
Seconded.
Then moved and seconded. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Motion passes. And Corey, we have some seats opening up. Does everyone out there know that they can come in or?
We've been filling some.
Okay, okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Just checking on that. Okay, the first item under New Business is a proposed resolution for a notice of intent to participate in the property tax relief program. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton and City Treasurer Finance Director Sarah Lins will provide a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, most of the, really all the materials that we have in this regard are included in the packet that we provided to council, but for a summary of those materials and for the public who may not have reviewed our packet, last week in the governor's press conference about moving to Stage Four, he announced a property tax relief program that would be available to, potentially available to residents across the state, leveraging Federal Cares Act funding that has been awarded to the state. Essentially, in order to provide this tax relief to property taxpayers, it's an optional program for cities and counties to opt in to participate in. And essentially, the commitment that participating cities and counties have to make is they will not take their allowed up to 3% increase in property tax in the subsequent budget year. And in addition to that, they must commit that they would not use any of their forgone funds that are available, so levy any of those forgone dollars. We are in the process of finalizing our budget for presentation to council next month, so we have a good idea where we're sitting in terms of revenues and expenditures. And when this program was announced as part of our budgeting process, Sarah and I went in and took a look at this and the impact and the mayor's direction with looking at can we take advantage of this opportunity to benefit our taxpayers within city limits. The 3% property tax increase as allowed would amount to up to $134,593. And in addition to it, the City of Sandpoint for next year's budget has $40,754 available in forgone that could be levied to cover projects or to balance our budget. It is our recommendation with where we are in our budget process that council approve our submission of our notice of intent to participate in this program. We are confident that we will be providing council with a balanced budget for consideration next month that maintains or improves our existing service levels and anticipates capital improvement projects in line with our master planning efforts underway and continues master planning efforts that have not been completed and supports the initiation of some new master planning efforts, parking study among those, watershed recreation study, some of the things that we haven't tackled yet in terms of master planning effort. The budget to be presented would not include an increase in property taxes. And in addition, we don't intend to present a budget that includes any forgone levying authority. And so our recommendation to the city council is that you authorize us to submit our notice of intent to participate in this program to benefit our taxpayers.
Any questions?
I just have one question. What was our forgone budgeted for this year? Was that still for firefighter equipment?
This year?
This year, yeah.
That was for police category.
Police equipment. So what that was budgeted for this year will still be covered?
Yes.
In the next year? That's just what I'm trying to get at.
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? No? Anything to add, Sarah?
What? No.
Good. Great. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this issue? Please come forward. And again, for the record, please state your name and whether or not you reside in the city and you have three minutes.
My name is Grant Dorman. I live in the county. I have property in the area of city influence and I pay taxes in the city and sales tax. My question, or is what conditions are attached to accepting the money from the state? Are there conditions attached that will in some manner burden the city, some sort of future indebtedness or the city residents who might receive benefit of the relief fund? So I think that'd be good for the public to know, if there's any conditions that they would be participating in down the road.
Steph, want to address that?
Yes. So the conditions associated with the program again are that we commit to not levying any additional property tax above what we have currently. And then the second condition is that we don't levy any of the forgone. Sandpoint, historically, we have levied our 3% to allow us to stay in line with inflationary factors and so that we don't get to a point where we significantly have to go to forgone or otherwise we're cutting levels of service because our costs for benefits, our costs for staff, our costs for projects go up as they do for the private sector as well. As we were preparing the budget this year, we had much conversation even before this program came out about how do we balance and maintain level of service or possibly increased level of service and be able to provide some relief to our residents during this crisis when they've been impacted financially. Some of the, we have been looking at potentially not even having to take the 3%, the full 3% as we were preparing the budget as it stood due to project cost savings. As Amanda covered here tonight, most of those savings were in SURA, but there has been past SURA dollars, but there have been previous presentations to the council where we have saved dollars as a result of realigning how we're approaching our management of projects. In addition, we've been highly successful in leveraging grant dollars. And so that ends up in savings to our property taxpayers as well, where we don't have to go to property taxes. And finally, we're really looking forward to providing council an update around our performance measures. You'll recall that this year, one of the changes we made in our staffing structure was adding a contracts and procurement position in the city to really manage our procurement, manage our contracting, ensuring we're getting the best value for the city. We are already seeing significant cost savings as a result of that effort. So that position has already more than paid for itself this year. And when we make changes like that, it puts us in a position where we can offset some of those inflationary increases through savings, through management changes and structural changes that we've made in the organization. So we do not see moving forward and we had a lot of conversation about this. Does this mean we forego the 3%? It falls into forgone and what we come back next year is looking at levying that dollar amount and being in a position of having to do that. We have looked forward into the next year's budget and things can change between now and then, but where we stand right now with our reserve balances, with our operating balances and our plans for programs and services, we don't anticipate having to levy that in the following year either. So this isn't a move something to the taxpayer from one year to the next. We don't believe we'll have to levy that the following year either. And we know, we're fully aware that the legislature is looking at this as well, looking at property tax savings for citizens. So we expect probably some changes on that front and potentially the ability of local governments to levy forgone that they have. So I guess the one other comment that I would make leading up to our budget discussion is we've had a lot of discussion in our budget presentations in accordance with council policies and procedures about establishing reserve funds as well in cases of emergency. So we do have that, that we could fall back on. We have established appropriate operating reserves. We will be presenting you a budget without having to tap into our emergency reserves at this point. So in the case that we have a significant financial emergency, those funds are still available, which again puts us in the position to be able to forego both the forgone as well as the 3% increase.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Somebody's raised their hand participating remotely.
Okay.
Mr. Lynn Scott, you have the floor if you'd like to unmute.
We can't hear you. Are you muted? Okay.
I indicated raising his hand. He wanted to speak, but it's not unmuting.
Okay. Maybe invite him to text a question if he has a question or comment. Does that feature?
Indicated raising his hand, he wanted to speak, but it's not unmuting.
Maybe invite him to text a question if he has a question or comment. Does that feature? Do we have functionality for that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Great. Well, we missed that one. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this issue? Great. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for notice of intent to participate in property tax relief program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? So be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spuro?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Great. Motion passes. I just want to acknowledge, you know, it's great that especially in the time of an economic downturn that we have the opportunity to offer a tax break to our residents like this. So I just think that speaks to how well city staff and council have done budgeting and financial planning for the city over the last four or five years. It's a really great job. Sarah, you in particular, but really done a great job building a really financially sound organization here. So that's great that we can pass that along to the taxpayers. The next item under new business is a proposed new police salary schedule. Human Resources Director Nicole Ghost and City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will provide a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a presentation beyond what I included in the packet. I did want to reiterate or make it clear however that this is not police compensation as though we are looking to defund the police. This is more of just a revised salary schedule included in the packet. I explained that previously there were instances where police officers could go up to three years without seeing any increase in pay unless they went to post to get higher levels of certification. So I looked at that and compared our pay to what the current market rates are and we fallen a bit behind other agencies that we typically benchmark against. We use Post Falls, Coeur d'Alene, Moscow, Lewiston, Cootenay County, Bonner County and McCall, a similar resort city. And what I found is we were falling behind. So I created a new salary schedule that gives additional earning opportunities a little bit quicker than our previous pay schedule did. And then also it was already incorporated in the previous schedule, but pay based on the level of certification that they received from post. So they can get intermediate, advanced, master. So really the only thing that's changing is there's, we went from almost a three-step system to 10 steps instead, giving officers more earning potential and bringing them back within the plus or minus 5% of the current market rates.
The only thing I would note to what Nicole has mentioned is again, the timing of this and coming before council. So this is directly related to budget preparation and budget presentation next month. So as we're going through our budgeting process in the spring in accordance with our current salary administration policy adopted by council, Nicole benchmarks every salary for every position across the city. So we're looking at similar cities and as she mentioned, we're looking at that plus or 5% across the range so that we're retaining qualified employees, we're competitive as we're recruiting employees. So this again was looking at, we were in line across the board with pretty much most of our positions and we'll have more presentation about that as we get moving forward. But with the police salary scale, it was wholesaling across the board. We were also across the board, we were out of alignment with our police salary schedules. So that led to these revisions. And before we present the budget to you next month, this is again getting approval for a salary scale that's incorporated into the budget.
Jennifer, you can probably answer this. If not, Corey, you can chime in. But can you please point out to the public why this is so important? Because when we lose a police officer, how much does it actually end up costing the city to retrain a new one?
I'm going to ask the chief for this.
I'm sure the public will appreciate this information and understand why we should stay in line with other departments or other cities so we don't lose our force.
I think you can hear me hopefully from here that I think if I heard the question is why do we want to pay more, want to retention? We talked about before with prior councils and with the public, every time we lose an officer, that cost that we have to go back through to train somebody through our academy, the time they go to the 10-week or 15-week academy, we go through our FTO. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in getting them trained, certified, equipped. And it takes us several years to get that money back. So the more, the better retention that we have through our pay, the more it saves us in the long run.
How much does it cost to train one officer with the uniforms and all that? I think you had kind of a ballpark number I asked.
I want to say last time we did the surveys, we were close to $100,000 in the time that we did our training. And tell me if I'm wrong, but I think the time we did our training and our uniforming and our equipment, we were, and then we look at that projection of how long you have to take to get your money back. Because it's not only the one officer. When we put them into training, it takes two officers during that training phase. So now you've got two officers that are really getting paid for one. So if I remember right, we were close to that $100,000 in our training projections just to get them through.
What are retention challenges that we have balanced?
I could speak forever about like why we need more money and why it's important to have it for officers retention. So some of the things that the city's done really good over the last, so five years ago when I took over, just for those of you that want a two-minute history lesson, one of the struggles that we had was retention. And we took and we really looked at the ways that we could keep our officers and why we could keep them here in Sandpoint. And we started looking at our salary, which is one that we started addressing. And that's what this update today is really important about because it helps keep us in line with those other areas. We looked at other things that we could do. So one of them was like our take-home cars. A couple of years ago, our city council approved take-home cars for our officers within that area. It was really the simple things and why we were losing officers outside of the area. A little bit of pay, a little bit of benefits, potential take-home car. Since we've done some of those things, our retention has really, I would like to say it's been really good. The fact that we've lost officers to their agency has really dramatically dropped. So all these little steps that we do, and the council's been extremely supportive over the last several years, helps keep those officers, keeps them with us. And the longer we can keep them, the more they get committed, they get committed not only to the department, but our community. So now they get vested in the community, they become part of the community. So as long as we can keep them and get them vested in our community, it's a benefit for us in the long run as a community.
Thank you.
Two minutes, Bill. Thank you, Corey.
Any other questions or comments from staff or council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
There's somebody who signed up. I wanted to find out if they were still here and if this is something they did want to comment on it. It indicated they may. Rick Barnabou?
Okay. Please come forward to the podium and if you could state your name and whether or not you reside in the city and you have three minutes.
My name is Rick Barnabou and I reside in Bonner County outside of the city. And I just want to add something here. I support the police and law enforcement in this community and I would urge you, if you can, to increase their salaries and their resources, especially during the times this country is going through at the moment. I think if you divert funds or any resources to the pressure groups that are here tonight, you're doing your constituents and this entire community a great disservice. How many of you in here know who George Floyd is? Y'all know who George Floyd is? Do you know who Tessa Majors is? No one? You know? Tessa Majors was a 19-year-old white college student who was murdered by a black man in New York City last November. Where is the outrage? George Floyd was a criminal. He didn't deserve to die, but he was a criminal. And if he wasn't a criminal, he would be alive today. Tessa Majors was stabbed to death for a lousy cellphone in Central Park and her parents just got their asses back. So the flower children that are here tonight and in the hallway are hypocrites because they don't care about Tessa Majors. They're out to push an agenda, in my opinion. And they are doing this community a great disservice by trying to put pressure on you people and the rest of the good citizens. This is not a racist community. It is not a discriminatory community. But if you listen to them, you will. So I thank you for your time, but I just want to add one final thing, one sentence. You can't argue facts with ignorant people who live in their own sense of moral superiority. And that's what many of these flower children do here. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate those comments. Anyone else? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for salary administration policy amendment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? So be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Spuro?
Yes.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will now continue with the public forum portion of the meeting. Corey, do you have?
I have one more.
Oh, sorry. One more. They're similar, but one more.
One more.
Apologies.
That's okay. Okay. You can just.
Yeah. The final item under new business is a proposed resolution for amendments to the city's salary administration policy. And Nicole, would you kick us off there again, please?
I will. So the major change in the salary administration policy is adding a longevity recognition award program. We've been, or I've been looking at different ways that we can recognize our employees both monetarily and non-monetarily. The non-monetary stuff I could implement a lot faster. It took a little bit more in-depth research to see what other agencies are doing and what works and what doesn't. So I've created a program that rewards employees for their service to the city, continued service to the city in five-year increments. So it's essentially for every five, for every year that you've worked, it's $10 per year. So five years, you get a $50 longevity award. And then there's a couple of other minor changes within the policy about progressive promotions. You can only have one per year. And then adding a couple more incentive pay under our training and development program.
Any questions? Does anyone in the public want to comment on this issue? All right. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for salary administration policy amendment.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spuro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we possibly take a five-minute break before moving back to public forum so staff can have a break for a couple of minutes and then to law enforcement can start to reach out and we can get people in line and get.
Yeah, that'd be great. We'll take a break for let's say five minutes till approximately 7:30, 8:00.
We have somebody who wanted to see his.
Okay. We will now continue with the public forum portion of the meeting. And again, for the record, for whoever's speaking, please state your name, whether or not you reside in the city and you have three minutes. And sir, before you begin, I just want to note for the record that Councilwoman Rule has stepped out. Sir, please.
Name's Ranger Rick. I'm from Priest River. I have no property here. Something I do bring is that I'm. is that I'm a Caucasian Native American, raised by a black family when my mom died. I cover all the areas. I'm increasingly alarmed by the absence of diversity of the opinion in recent protests and national response to them. Many objections to this idea have been raised by sober voices, including that from within the black community itself, such as Thomas Sowell and Woodford Reddy. These people are not racist, Arco Toms. They're intelligent scholars who reject the narrative that strips black people of agency and systematically externalizes the problems of the black community onto outsiders. They claim the difficulties of the black community faces entirely are casually explained by factors in the form of white systemic racism, white supremacy, and other forms of white discrimination, which claims problematic. That should be vigorously challenged by historians. Instead, it's treated as an actionable truth without serious consideration of its profound flaws. Overwhelmingly, the reason provided by BLM and its allies is either primarily interdusal or is transparently motivated. As an example of the latter, consider the proportion of black incarcerated Americans. This proportion is often used to characterize our criminal justice as anti-black. Would you characterize the justice system as a conspiracy against American men in general? Using the same mythology, we would conclude that the criminal justice system is more anti-male than black. Blacks are not incarcerated at higher rates in their involvement than in the violent crimes that they do. This fact has been demonstrated nationwide. There is nothing to do with white America. It has everything to do with blacks needing to police blacks, not tell us how to run our towns, our counties, or states. Our claims of criminal justice system as white supremacist, why is that? Asians, Indians, Nigerians, Jews, are all Americans. They're incarcerated at vastly lower rates than white Americans. They also commit less crimes than blacks. Most of the violence is black-on-black communities committed by black people. There is virtually no marches for these invisible black victims, no public silences, no heartfelt letters. The message is clear. Black lives only matter when white police officers take them, usually in self-defense. Check the facts. More white criminals are shot by white police officers than black criminals are shot by white police officers. Black violence is expected and soluble, while white violence requires explanation and demands. No discussion is permitted for white victims of black violence, who proportionally outnumber the black victims of the whites. There exists a large consistency of what can be called race hustlers, hucksters of all colors, and all they do is use the black issues. Look at the city, states, and Democratic-controlled. How's that working for the blacks? And I'd say it's, in closing, it's sad for anyone who loses family, but so you'll know who you're fighting for, George Floyd. He's a multiple felon who went to hurt a pregnant woman.
Sir, your time is up.
Why, that was wonderful. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your words.
And then, after that, Holly?
My name is Marty Stitzel. I'm a county resident. I live about a half a mile outside of the city limits. I guess my question, or the issue that I have is with all the guns that are around here, including this room here tonight. I have, I have a serious, I am a gun owner, but I have a serious issue with the number of guns with the militia, the unregulated militia. I know that's, there's the Second Amendment. It talks about a regulated, well-regulated militia. I don't see any regulations concerning our militia, and our police chief calls them patriots. I call them domestic terrorists, partly because I don't want to go downtown, or I don't want to go to the festival, when I know I'm sitting next to somebody who's probably going to have an AR-15. I have friends that, we've discussed this when we get together, we're not going to go downtown anymore if we're going to have unregulated militia marching around town with AR-15s. Part of this might come from the fact that, you know, the gun people will claim that a well-armed society is a safe society. My question is, how do they define safety? If you look, it doesn't take a whole lot of research to find, anybody in this room can do the research, and they can find out that the more guns there is in a society or in a country, the more deaths you're going to have and injuries and stuff. The U.S. ranks near the top. There's a couple of countries that are worse than us, not many. There's about five or six. I did the research, found out there's half a dozen or so countries that are, that has more gun deaths per 100,000 citizens than we do. The word of the major countries, so-called civilized countries, we're at the top. That is not a good distinction to have. Part of this might come from the fact that my sister is a, was a victim of a gunshot. She survived it, but I still do not like the idea of having armed militia, unregulated militia, walking around our streets or going to our festivals. I will not be attending those things. I'll find someplace else to go shopping. I know most of the people, the gun people here, would say, "Don't let the door hit you in the back. Good riddance." But I think it is very bad for the city of Sandpoint. And I know I'm not going to change anything here in North Idaho, but I think it's very bad seen for the city of Sandpoint to have to deal and live with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, city council members, community members, the mayor of Sandpoint. My name is Holly Walker. I'm speaking as a citizen of Sandpoint. I've been a teacher in this community for 15 years. I'm a commissioner on the City Arts Commission, and my children are fourth-generation Sandpoint residents. I speak before you this evening regarding the issue of chalk art on the underpass to the city beach. I'm requesting that the city council approve a provision to the current public art policy enabling citizens to use chalk as a form of freedom of personal expression in this location. It can be considered a temporary interactive public art mural, which is a type of public art not currently addressed in the City Arts Commission bylaws. Recently, the ITD put up no trespassing signs in this space, which has silenced the voices of this community in a way that is reflective of an oppressive society. People have been riding on the walls of this underpass for years without consequence. Last week, words and images in support of Black Lives Matter were washed away overnight by the ITD. The chalk art was an expression of peaceful protest created by the residents of Sandpoint. Erasing these important messages perpetuates the racist and unwelcoming messages that unfortunately North Idaho is famous for. Members of the city council, is this the kind of community that you are trying to uphold and create? Quote from the City of Sandpoint's Arts, Culture, and Historical Preservation Master Plan intent, "Sandpoint aspires to be one of the nation's best small art towns by encouraging local artists, preserving cultural heritage, nurturing creativity, inspiring original expression, and cultivating art appreciation. I am curious how it is possible for us to state these ideals when envisioning the future of our town, when faced with the actual moment when citizens of all ages are empowered to express themselves through art in a non-permanent, peaceful manner, then that the message literally gets washed off overnight." Another goal with the master plan specifically includes recommendations for time-based art, temporary art, cultural events, or any other arts and culture-related activities to support and enhance the community. The citizens of this community are speaking. We are an arts community. This is what a thriving arts community looks like. Temporary public art is a powerful vehicle for peaceful social discourse. Don't take away this already-established space to express the complex issues at hand. Allow us a way to engage in these difficult conversations. Cities across the nation are creating powerful public art overnight. Chalk art is a celebrated medium for community engagement from Florence, Italy, to Boise, Idaho, where the Public Art Master Plan encourages neighborhoods to create chalk art on a regular basis to develop what is called placemaking. If Boise can do it, Sandpoint can too. Let us unite against this culture of silence. Let us empower our children with the simplest form of expression. Let us address the polarities of our community. If not in this relatively peaceful form of expression, then how? Let us use Bridge Street to build metaphorical bridge in this divided community.
Ms. Walker, your time is up. Thank you for your words.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Michelle Mandoff, and I do live in Sandpoint. And I want to thank you all for allowing us to speak here. I grew up in San Diego, and we would drive back to Texas. I saw racism firsthand. I saw the segregation. I saw the people in the cotton fields, and it broke my heart. It tore me apart. I was only 10 years old at the time, and I knew something was wrong. I think we need to bring history back into the schools so that kids will learn what has happened and how far we've come from since the 1960s. The racism, we have people of all races and both genders, and I believe there are still only two, holding offices in the highest arenas of our political, and also their lawyers, their doctors, everything, you know? So, the opportunities are there if they take advantage of them. BLM, I hate to see the divisiveness going on in here. Back to the history, okay? Let's teach where slavery, slavery came from in the Democratic South. Let's teach who started the KKK, the South, once again. Let's teach about the Civil Rights Movement, when it was the Democrats who didn't even want the black man to vote. And it was only passed because of the Republicans. And I must say, the last election was the first time I ever voted for a Republican. The BLM, I wish they would take care of their own. It's sad to see what happens across the country. It is not a race issue because it happens to everyone of all races when the police, when the police violence does happen. And we've seen it all, and we ignore it because of this agenda. And what else I want to say? Oh, I have a minute and four. Okay, so, back, okay, but I'm done with the history, but we need to bring the history back into the schools, okay? I didn't bring my kids up to be racist, you know? I let them know that there is good and bad in all things, and that's what we need to let this town know. I worked at a jobber site in this town. I've worked several jobs. I have never seen any racism until one man came up from Hayden many years ago. And to spin this card, and the media to spin this card, people are brainwashed. They have blinders on. There is no racism in this community. And the divisiveness that's going on over this, with the better-than-thou attitudes, the "love live here" signs in the front yard, and you see the very same people on Facebook being hateful, spiteful, and just darn right mean. Thank you. 13 minutes, 13 seconds on that.
Thank you for your comments.
Angela, would you, just, yeah, here, I'm sorry. I wanted to finish up on a statement that was made previously by another speaker.
But you get, no, no, you get to speak, facing the council.
Can I use his notes?
Bring him up with you. But he doesn't get to come speak. He has the opportunity to speak.
My name's Angela Monticero. I do not live in Sandpoint. The mayor had this discussion with me, I am speaking in his behalf. The mayor had this discussion with me that he himself called civil, yet he and his wife refused to post it on social media. Why not mention the video if you both are honest and want unity in our community? The answer is that they don't want, they want division. The mayor and his wife post very divisive and contradictory articles and videos to their Facebook pages despite knowing that none of them is true. 50 armed white men harassing and following children with pointing firearms at them? When and where did this occur? Because none of us saw this. To my knowledge, there was no official police report on this supposed attack on children. Either they are lying to the community, or a police department is complicit in aiding 50 armed white men harassing and assaulting children. I would bet my money on the former if I were a betting man, since our police departments are loved and respected here by all of us. Amen. I have physical evidence, screenshots of the mayor intentionally lying to the community. He says one thing in private messages, but turns around with the same moment and posts the complete opposite to his Facebook pages. Why would our mayor do this? I can tell you why. He and his wife want division here. I have shown these screenshots to both his supporters and his opposition, and they all agree with me that he is being extremely hypocritical. He is all lip service in person, but inflammatory when online, and has the stage to himself. Also, the mayor said that we were all armed with fully automatic weapons in downtown. May I ask how he came to this conclusion without holding or firing any of the weapons, let alone asking each and every one of us about our weapons on hand? It seems the mayor has yet again made up lies to fit his narrative rather than speak truth and bring unity to our community. And when Mr. Aspiero tried to clarify the details during one meeting on June 3rd, the mayor cut in abruptly and rudely stating, "I think it's irrelevant," clearly showing that when the evidence and facts go against his narrative, honesty and integrity become irrelevant to him. The mayor and his wife support this CHAZ These are armed terrorists with Antifa, communist-supported, and they wholeheartedly support them taking over part of the city by means of violence and intimidation, as per her Facebook page saying, "This makes me miss Seattle." And yet, they speak, they speak down to us about peacefully standing in town and willing to protect Sandpoint's businesses and citizens. Why is that? If you two miss it that much, terrorism, burning buildings, and attacking police, then please move back there, and don't ask for it to come here or wish it upon us. It seems that if their party is going to do, if their party is doing it, and much worse, then it's okay. But the racist red...
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, share what's on my heart. If you can hear this message, it might be for you. I have, my name is Todd Bradshaw. I live in Sagal, and I do work on First Avenue right here in Sandpoint. And I've been compelled to share this word. It's from Todd and from God. In light of recent protests, and so many concerned about safety, rights, which lives are essential, which lives matter, there's so much passion, division, and opinions on what we need to do to change and to make things better. So, I ask all of you, if there was a solution, wouldn't we all want to know what that is? Well, I know the solution. The answer, the answer is love, agape love. Listen to this excerpt from the most historically accurate and most widely circulated book in existence today, the Bible. This is from Philippians, Chapter 2, out of the New Living Translation. It says, "Is there any encouragement from belonging to Christ, any comfort from His love, any fellowship together in the Spirit? Are your hearts tender and compassionate? Then make me truly happy by agreeing wholeheartedly with each other, loving one another and working together with one mind and purpose. Don't be selfish. Don't try to impress others. Be humble. Think of others as better than yourselves. Don't look out only for your own interest, but take an interest in others, too. You must have the same attitude that Christ Jesus had. Though He was God, He did not think of equality with God as something to cling to. Instead, He gave up His divine privileges. He took the humble position of a slave and was born as a human being. When He appeared in human form, He humbled Himself in obedience to God and died a criminal's death on a cross. Therefore, God elevated Him to the place of highest honor and gave Him the name above all other names, that at the name of Jesus, every knee should bow in heaven and on earth and under the earth, and every tongue declare that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father." This kind of love is only possible through the power and the presence of Jesus Christ. I'd like to conclude by praying for all y'all. God, you are so, so good. Thank you. God, we don't deserve it, yet you showed us mercy, the finished work of Jesus. He paid our price on the cross, and it's open for all of us to receive. I pray over the citizens, the leaders, the police officers, children, parents, everyone, God. There is no hope without Jesus. I ask that you would pour out your spirit to overflow, God, that you would bring freedom in Christ. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
Thomas Leo. I am not from here in town. I wish to address some of the issues that were brought up at the last council meeting. The mayor was assessing the success of the event with terms like, "Nobody got shot. Nobody was arrested." That's a rather low bar, if you ask me. And we're all glad of it, of course. However, some people should have been arrested, shouldn't they? A contingent of vandals, under the impression that you gave them permission to deface public property, were there on the day of the protest. property, were there on the day of the protest. Kate McAllister offered to help participate with the graffiti as well. There are dozens of pictures on social media of your friends committing misdemeanors, pictures that you've liked. Your intent is good, perhaps, but your impact on protesters has been nothing but divisive. Yet you take no responsibility for the impact of your actions while you parade little girls from high school around chanting about how some lives matter more than others. If your intent is righteous, your impact is divisive when you side with lawbreakers and berate law-abiding citizens. You simply gave lawbreakers a pass. On the other hand, there were those who exercised their legal rights, their legal constitutional rights, citizens that, well, you simply don't tolerate. You gave 15 minutes of berating them in the last council meeting. You cut off one of your council members when you deemed what he had to say is irrelevant. That's using your position on the council and other positions as an activist. I want to thank, thank council members Aspiero and Grob for bringing some balance to the conversation, in spite of what was said at the meeting. The mayor and others expressed a fear for lack of training of those patriot citizens on the street. I wonder what objective method was used to assess their training? Because, quite honestly, many of them were trained as well as our local police, because they are law enforcement. A few hours of gun training will help those who are worried identify a gun being handled in an unsafe manner. A little education and you'll be better equipped to assess the situation, rather than living in an irrational fear. It was said that the public protection, the public protection is the police's job. And also, it was said that there was public safety there to make sure that nothing bad happened. Either you're going to trust the police that you just praised to make sure that nothing bad happens, or you're not. You can't have it both ways. But it's really not about the training, now is it? It's about optics. I don't like those big black guns! Well.
Sir, your time is up.
Very good, thank you for your time. I did have a show and tell if you're interested. I, real quick, it will take a few seconds. This is chalk. If, this is also.
Sir, your time is up.
I appreciate that. If there are, if there are going to be people coloring the town with chalk, those are the materials that they should be using. You can buy it on amazon.com, it's cheap. Thank you.
Before you start, is Marty Salara in the room?
Right here.
I mean, you'll be the last one to go today, sir. I'll have to go before you.
Ma'am, floor is yours.
My name's Kate Dorson, and I reside outside of city limits of Sandpoint. And I would like to discuss the BLM protests, armed citizens, and a Facebook post. As I stood that Thursday afternoon with 50 or so patriots in Sandpoint, I can tell you that we stood in peace and protection. Young protesters I spoke with had thanked us for watching over them as they protested. Those mostly teenagers were not standing on the bridge in fear. They were laughing, many posing for pictures taken by those gun-toting men on the bridge. This was not to put fear in our community, it was solely to be a deterrent and a protection should that group, not the protesters, come that has been wreaking havoc and destruction to many cities and small towns. Had a commissioner not encouraged this, had citizens not stood up in preparedness, had we not been there, we would have woke up the next day to vandalism, or a town burned down to the ground, like many others. A thank you to our community I feel was much deserved, as our town stayed in one piece. We should be appreciating these armed citizens protecting lives and property, because the towns without these have not been so lucky. Well, we all see, what we all saw in Coeur d'Alene and Sandpoint was a beautiful sight. People with different views and beliefs came together, no one was hurt, no shots were fired with all those guns, and no buildings were damaged. I hope we never see this again, but many of us feel there is still more to come. I sure hope we all look at the people that love North Idaho and want it to remain this amazing peaceful place a little differently from here forward. If our council plans to promote and allow BLM to take hold of our community, I would sure hope that the same would hold true to the freedom advocates, God-loving citizens, and those who value their constitution. If we plan to paint the town and deface property in BLM, then the town shall be painted and educated on abortion information, because those lives matter, medical freedom, because death from malpractice lives matter, and so forth. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marty Salara. Although a recent transplant here, I've been here for six years, I've really grown to love this town and this area. I studied it for three years, to find out where I wanted to retire and where I wanted to be. And I chose here for many different reasons. I also am head of a design firm that specializes in relocation of executives, professionals that want to move to a safe, secure location. You may not know it, but Sandpoint and this area is very famous. In my circles, the design, build, architectural, engineering firm, this is rated as the top five in places to retire and move to. But the comment was, "Near, but not in Sandpoint, Idaho." And the reason for that is an overabundance of leftist liberal attitudes, okay? I haven't been to Democratic meetings here, it's laughable when they had the meeting, and our honored mayor was there at the time when he was running, and the goal was to destroy the Second Amendment. They had a shell and tell with guns, and it was laughable how ignorant they all were, and there was a lot of pearl clutching and hysteria because someone brought out an old rifle. And it is so sad to see the paranoia that comes with that, and also the characterization that is embedded. You talk about inherent racism, there's inherent discrimination from the Ruby Ridge factor in this town and in this media that is unacceptable, it is unreal, and is delusional, and I will not stand for it anymore. I will start my own media company and counter the bee and the reader and start getting down to the truth. The BLM is a communist organization. I've studied this thoroughly, I'm a writer and a blogger, and I know this inside and out. What you also know is I was a radical left-wing, let's say activist in the 60s. I countered the police in Chicago, I was shot at at Kent State, I ran marches there, I knew the weatherman, I knew Abby Hoffman, Jerry Rubin, we blew up buildings, robbed banks, and killed cops. And we're here again, history is repeating itself. The BLM movement is organized as a communist takeover of the United States. We are in a civil war. Let us look at the 500-pound gorilla here. They say it in their writings, they're being supported from foreign corporate and international numbers. Why? Why? Because the idea is to turn the country and this government over to a socialist communist regime. Period. If you support it, then you are also aiding and abetting domestic terrorism, as Antifa has been charged as such. There you go.
Can you hear me if I set this up here? Okay, so I was gonna have a short statement about divisive language being used by our leadership in open public and in apparently proclamations now. But instead, I'm more interested in hearing the rest of Mr. Ryan Lach's talk, so I'm just gonna read that into the record. Okay, so in conclusion, you guys can recall where we left off, the mayor is a hypocrite and doesn't want unity, his entire message is about how hateful and prejudiced our community is, causing division that otherwise wouldn't exist. Does racism exist? Absolutely. From what I've witnessed and experienced, our city and county is against racism of any kind. Yet the mayor accuses anyone who disagrees with him of being racist and hateful with a broad brush. I simply don't see the hate he speaks of in this community. The mayor behaves like a child and makes inflammatory statements before knowing the facts anytime someone stands against him or calls him out. He seldomly presents facts, and only speaks with emotions in these situations, which ends with him making up lies and creating division intentionally within our community, rather than having an adult discussion. He is almost 50 years old and shouldn't be acting this way, let alone as the mayor of a town. I am willing to die protecting an innocent person in this town, while the mayor could never do this because he is more concerned about what the next headline or story he can push is. He is willing to attack and slander the very people who would protect him and render aid in dangerous scenario. Mr. Mayor, you quote General Mattis, but you are no leader. Just because you hold a leadership position, that doesn't make you a leader. I've known 18-year-old men and women in the military with better leadership and more integrity. So quit reading leadership quotes pretending to be something you are not. You have a habit of these behaviors that create division, and our community is starting to see this and your true colors. You and your base have tried to call me a racist and white nationalist ever since last year's inclusion initiative, I'll remember that to no avail. People on both sides politically know me in this town, and they know that you and your base are wrong. Many here would say you picked the wrong person that day to approach and instigate with your own egotistical and political reasons. I've had enough of your lies, slander, and senseless division you seem to thrive on here in this town. Because I'm medically retired, I've tried to be silent and remain in the shadows of the mountains that surround this amazing and beautiful community, but no more. Myself and the good people of this town and community are tired of you speaking for all of us when you clearly don't know us and don't care to. I'm gonna go ahead and stop there, seems like a good place to stop. Thanks for your time.
Michelle's the last one there that we have.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Michelle Dorman, and I don't reside in the city of Sandpoint. We live in Sully Valley. But I would like to read Mr. Mayor a letter that my son wrote to you, and he sent to you, and I'm not sure if it was passed on to the rest of the council members in regards to your post on Facebook. His name is Cole Dorman, and he is 16 years old here in Sandpoint. Dear Mr. Mayor, I am writing this letter regarding your response on Facebook about the vigilantes and protesters. You had addressed that many people were scared and uncomfortable. I only saw a few people that were upset, that others were exercising their Second Amendment right. I myself and everybody around me were not scared nor afraid, but instead, I felt more safe that others were there to keep Sandpoint at peace. Some businesses were glad to see Sandpoint citizens ready to take action if needed. Some might say armed citizens are prohibiting protesters to protest because they are scared or made uncomfortable. It is the people's right to protest, which is what everybody let them do. On the opposite side, we wouldn't want what happened in Spokane or many other places in the country to happen in Sandpoint. I am sure if you talked to any of the armed citizens, their goal wasn't to stop the protesters, but instead make sure it was a peaceful protest. God bless. Cole Dorman, Sandpoint High School student. And I don't believe he ever received a response from you, but my hope is that you actually let people know both sides of who has contacted you and who has reached out to you, because it's not just people that were in fear and scared that evening, but people that are in support of people, the citizens protecting this wonderful city that we live in. Thank you.
Appreciate those comments, thank you. Cory, that's it? Okay. All right, with that, this meeting.
I have 13 seconds left, can I just say one thing?
No, I'm sorry. This meeting is adjourned.